Welcome to our November 12th Sandusky City Commission meeting. Prior to tonight's meeting, I will offer an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Remind us that we are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is our responsibility to serve the good of the common good of all. This we pray, in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cresser, will you call the roll?
Mr. Poole?
Present.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Murray is running late, and Ms. Lloyd needs to be excused.
I would ask commissioners if they would like to excuse both Commissioner Murray first and then Commissioner Lloyd.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. I think we need to do Commissioner Lloyd separately.
Yes.
Need a motion to excuse Commissioner Lloyd.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. I'm going to get just slightly out of order tonight. We have with us some folks from the Zonta International. We're going to be reading a proclamation. We are fortunate to have the District Five Governor of Zonta with us, Margot Hoffman. Her area includes both Kentucky, Ohio, and West Virginia. In addition to Ms. Hoffman, we have with us Zonta's oldest living member, Ms. Marilyn Canada. I want to welcome both of them and ask them to come forward. And Commissioner Twine is going to read a very fitting proclamation for your organization that I understand just turned 100 years on November the 7th of this year.
Wow.
Quite an accomplishment. Congratulations. And quite a benefit to the women, not only of the United States, but the women of the world. Commissioner Twine.
They're saying scoot in closer, they want to get a picture. And we welcome you all here today, and also on behalf of all of the Zonta members across the world. The proclamation reads as, "Whereas Zonta International has over 29,000 members in 63 countries around the world, with an emphasis on making a difference in the lives of women and girls by working to improve the legal, political, economic, health, educational, and professional status of women through service and advocacy. And whereas Zonta International was founded in 1919 in Buffalo, New York, by a group of forward-thinking women who were not satisfied with the predominantly social nature of many women's organizations. And whereas Zonta's founders envisioned a women's service organization to advocate for laws and policies that ensured gender equality and help every woman and girl realize her full potential. And whereas Zonta International is a non-governmental organization with consultative status with the Economic and Social Council of United Nations. And whereas the Zonta Club of Greater Sandusky was chartered in 1961, and club membership includes over 20 women who represent executives and professionals from diverse occupations. And whereas the Zonta Club of Greater Sandusky is committed to the values of love, international fellowship, and integrity, service, and building community. Now therefore, the Sandusky City Commission wishes the members of Zonta Club International a joyous 100th anniversary, and asks the citizens of Sandusky to join in congratulating members of Zonta for their efforts and success with preventative health, mentoring, and leadership, advocacy, and essentials for living dated this 12th day of November 2019." Thank you. Let's turn over here.
Receiving right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome to make some remarks if you'd like. Great. I'll introduce you.
Thank you.
And now the Zonta Governor for this district has got to share with us just a few remarks. If you'll step to the podium, we've got a nice podium there with a great seal on it.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much for this wonderful recognition. As you shared, we've been around for over 100 years, but we have a little bit of a brand identity. But I'm glad to see all the great work that is done in the city of Sandusky with our Zonta Club of Greater Sandusky, who's been almost, not quite, 60 years with us as a Zonta club. And the District Five, which is Ohio, Kentucky, and West Virginia, we have clubs that are as old as 98 years old. So we've been around almost as long as Zonta International has been around, doing work to advance the status of women. So thank you very much for having us this evening, and thank you for your support in the community, and we'll let you get back to your meeting.
Thank you. And thank you for all the work that you do for not just the women of the United States, but literally the women all over the world.
Thank you very much.
And now, as Mr. Murchley usually does, explains that you folks are certainly welcome to stay for a two-and-a-half, three-hour meeting if you like, or you can sneak out the back door, which I would suggest.
Thank you.
Thanks. I will move to audience participation on agenda items only. You step to the microphone and identify yourself and tell us who you are and where you live. Boy, don't everyone rush to the microphone at once? Mr. Haber.
Just make sure we do approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes. Motion for the approval of the minutes?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the October 28th meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff regarding tonight's legislation. Would someone like to make a motion to accept those communications?
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unopposed. Are there any consent items that commissioners would like moved from the consent agenda to the irregular agenda? There are none. Ms. Cresser, will you present agenda items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item A is the disposal of items in the Sandusky Police Department. Item B is approval of a change order, number one and final, for the Lyons Park Revetment Project. It is a deduction. Item C is a change order, the second, with Pro Supply Incorporated, for the CDBG fiscal year 2018 demolition project, number one. It is a deduction and an extension of time only. Item D is the annual discharge fee payment to the Ohio EPA for the wastewater treatment plant for calendar year 2019. Item E is for the purchase of bulk rock salt for the calendar year 2020. And item F is the disposal of old fire hose and the purchase of new sections of fire hose from the Sutphen Corporation.
Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda items. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Move to accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Cresser, will you pull the commission on the motion?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Those ordinances pass. Ms. Cresser, will you please present item number one? And Ms. Cresser, before you do that, I have, even though I was reminded twice about this, I want to step back a moment and welcome Mr. Meiser, who appears to have been elected in the last election. I want to welcome him to the table. We have a tradition here of inviting elected officials prior to them taking office and inviting them to sit at our table with us. They are also invited to participate in discussion. They don't get to vote, but they do get to put their two cents worth in. So welcome, welcome, Mr. Meiser. Mr. Monroe is also invited, but he had a previous engagement that he couldn't get out of, so hopefully he'll be with us in the future if he's truly elected. Ms. Cresser, will you present item number one?
Yes, item number one is an ordinance declaring that certain real property owned by the city as part of the land utilization program identified as parcel number 58-00805.000 located at 1215 Central Avenue is no longer needed for any municipal purpose and authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale agreement with respect to that real property and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, you've heard the communication. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Further discussion? Any discussion? No discussion? Ms. Cresser, will you call the roll?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance passes. Ms. Cresser, item number two.
Item number two is a resolution in support of the 2020 Census Complete Count Initiative and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Cresser, will you pull the commission on that motion?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance passes. Ms. Cresser, item number two.
Item number two is a resolution in support of the 2020 Census Complete Count Initiative and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, I wonder if you can just give us a Reader's Digest version of what we're doing here with spending this $174,000?
Yeah, sure. Through you, Mr. Acting President. About four years ago, five years ago, we started negotiating with Ohio EPA, renegotiating with Ohio EPA through our combined sewer overflow plan. And at the time, they had wanted us to do about $86 million worth of projects, but we negotiated to knock that down to do, agree to about 18 and a half million with deferring the rest so we could do sewer model updates and we could analyze what our sewer system looks like. So we've implemented those first 8 million. The last project that we agreed to do is around 10 and a half million dollars, and that was money from several years ago. Those numbers were estimated a couple of years ago. So we want to make sure that we're getting a project that's designed properly. It's not overdesigned, it's not underdesigned. So what we're doing with this is we're going to be analyzing our sewer system, we're going to be updating that model. And that way, we can make sure that that 10 and a half million dollar project isn't 18 million or isn't 4 million. And this will also help us in three years when we go back and renegotiate with EPA so that we can update this model one last time with those first five projects incorporated into it. And then we can make sure that we're doing projects that are actually required rather than just agreeing to projects that EPA is forcing on us to do. And going slightly off topic, I do know that we get several emails, phone calls, things like that about the rates. And I do want to address that this is something that the, these projects that EPA is requiring of us, they're great for the environment, they're reducing the overflows, they're reducing the sanitary sewer overflows or the combined sewer overflows. So it's great for the environment, but at the same time, I'm analyzing the rates every year, making sure that we're staying within budget. These were included in the rate study from years ago, so we shouldn't, we're not going to be looking at those rates, increasing those rates again because of these projects. This 174,000, I'll make sure is in the capital plan, the five-year capital plan. But that 10 and a half million project I was referencing, we're going to be looking at starting that later in 2020, starting the design of that. So we want to make sure that we move on this project very quickly. They originally told me it was going to take about a year and a half for them to implement everything, and I told them that wasn't going to work. We'd need it in about six to eight months. So that's why we need to do this on an emergency, so they can look at everything and get everything incorporated.
Mr. Klein, was that the Reader's Digest version or was that a novel?
That was the Engineering Reader's Digest version.
You're doing a great job. And I've been around you and your department enough to know that the original numbers that the EPA gives us seem astronomical. You have done, you and your office, all of your people, staff, have done a great job of drilling those numbers down and finding ways for us, through green infrastructure and a variety of ways, of softening those numbers to us by the millions of dollars. And that, you know, hopefully it will be reflected and is reflected in our rate structure. So thank you, and thank you to your staff. Good job. Further discussion or questions? Ms. Cresser, will you pull the commission?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance passes. Ms. Cresser, will you give us item number four?
Yes, item number four is the first reading of an ordinance amending Part 5 General Offenses Code, Chapter 531, nuisances generally, Sections 531.01 definitions, and 531.02 public nuisances, and adopting new Section 531.05 graffiti of the codified ordinances of the city of Sandusky in the manner and way specifically set forth.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
Commissioner Lockhart. Excuse me. Looking past Commissioner Lockhart.
Right, smaller, different anyways. I just want to make sure, and I had some discussion, I guess, with the staff, just want to make sure that the public knows that this is in the best interest of the public, that we address graffiti properly. There's always the concern of First Amendment issues when it comes to expression of art, and there's a difference. Graffiti, as I know it, is something that's unwanted on public property, or, I'm sorry, on public or private property. And so generally, something that's not wanted, and that's what we, I think, are addressing today. So, and perhaps the staff could speak to it, or I think Mr. Lasko is on this legislation. So if you don't mind, maybe Mr. Lasko can just give us a little fill-in.
Mr. Lasko?
Yes, through you, Commissioner Brady to Commissioner Lockhart, members of the commission. This is the addition of another item under our nuisance code. Other public nuisances, just an example, could be high grass, junk vehicles, and this would be an addition of graffiti. As it currently sits, it is not in the city's ability to cite a private property owner for having graffiti on their property, nor so can the city abate graffiti on a private property or a private structure in the public right-of-way. So this would allow the city to have that right, to not only cite, but to also abate if necessary. I will be the first to say that this is not the most prevalent nuisance that is in our city, but it does exist. Many times behind commercial properties, on vacant properties, and very prevalent on garages that abut alleys in our residential neighborhoods. So we're looking for one more tool in the toolbox. I do think it's important to note, I've had a conversation with a commissioner or two, I think it would be my recommendation that we, at least, if not other amendments, at least suggest one other amendment. Under the definition of graffiti, it does not state who provides authorization of its existence. So I think what we're trying to get across is it's only if the private property owner doesn't authorize it. So if a private property owner, through their First Amendment rights, wants to do something on their property, that is permissible. So I do think that the definition needs an amendment to be very clear on who's providing authorization. But again, we are really just looking for one more tool in the toolbox to be able to address what we believe is a nuisance when it comes up throughout the calendar year. So with that, I don't know if the law director would want to add anything to that, and certainly commissioners as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Just a question. As we move forward, do we have a, you talked about multiple places that we have graffiti. Do you have a list of property owners who have refused to take it down, take graffiti down, that you're going to move on it once we pass this legislation?
Through you, Commissioner Brady to Commissioner Poole. We do have an initial list, which has been a combination of complaints we've received, but also just from our code compliance officers being out and about. We've tried to manage over the last four or five years with trying to find people to voluntarily do it or to link people with economic challenges to groups that can address it. We do have a handful of properties already that would be in violation of this if they do not voluntarily remove it. So I guess that's a long-winded answer of saying, yes, we do know that there's properties already, or that would be in violation if this were passed.
Thank you. Mr. Haber, can you weigh in on this? Do you have some, maybe, I think we're talking about some semantics here in language, but perhaps you can share with us a terminology that we may proceed with an amendment to clear this up?
Sure, through you, Commissioner, now Vice President, I guess. There's a couple of things. I know that Commissioner Lloyd wanted to address the word graffiti. Sometimes graffiti art is something that has a positive connotation to it. So she had asked that maybe we amended to, changed the word graffiti to defaced property, and I don't have an issue with that. Initially, when this was written, there was no, it was always designed for authorization from the property owner. So I'm not, I had no objection to making it more explicit, making it more clear.
And the key, if I understand this correctly, the key is authorization. Something that's unauthorized is graffiti.
Correct.
Authorized, no matter how it looks, if it's authorized, it is not graffiti.
Correct.
So do you believe that the wording that we have now is sufficient, or do you believe that we should expand upon that wording?
I believe it's sufficient, but I would not be opposed to making it, I will never be opposed to making it more clear. So if we want to spell out, and I can spell it out and bring you back something for the next meeting about who has that authorization. Obviously, it's just going to be something about adding without prior authorization from the property owner.
Mr. Poole, do you have some thoughts on this?
Just about changing it from graffiti to defacing, just recognize that you have now minimized defacing to the words in this, in here. And I'm not sure that's really a good idea. Graffiti covers it. Just, all of a sudden, defacing is limited to inscriptions, words, figures, or designs which are marked at scratch, drawn, or plied, painted on any structural component of any building. I submit that there are probably other ways to deface buildings than that, and we may just, I mean, you're the lawyer, if you don't mind, I don't care, but I don't, I think that you've taken out all kinds of other things that other, that would be defacing a building. Somebody decides to go up and throw mud on the side of your house, it's defacing. Has nothing to do with graffiti. So if you're comfortable, we'll live with it, but I expect we're going to wish we hadn't later, since graffiti actually covers it just fine with the definition that you gave.
Commissioners, further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with Commissioner Poole in regards to the wording graffiti. Graffiti seems to be the most common word in the English language to know what we're talking about when we talk about graffiti. We understand that. And as he says, defacing can be a lot of other things, I think, because, you know, the, if you look at the Sphinx in Egypt, when you cut the nose off, that's defacing as well. So I think saying graffiti is plenty, that's, we're right on target when we say graffiti.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Mr. Haber, do you have any thoughts on what I presented? I mean, I'm not the lawyer, but we're trying to get a balance here for what actually works.
I think if we change it to defacement, I don't think we'd be, because the definition after that is so clear, I think we're okay. I don't think defacement's used anywhere else where this would be an issue.
Okay. So it would be applies to just this law, and that's the end of it?
Correct.
Defaced in this?
To this chapter.
It wouldn't go elsewhere?
Yep.
Okay, and that makes sense then. Thank you.
Is there a motion to amend, to change, to add the word defacing?
Go for it.
Second to that?
I'll second it. It's easy.
Has there been a motion and a second? Ms. Cresser, will you pull the commission on that motion?
Would she read the?
You have discussion on it.
Let her read, and I want to have her reread the motion so I know what we're doing.
Ms. Cresser, reread the motion.
I believe the motion was just to amend the legislation to add the word defacement rather than graffiti?
To replace graffiti everywhere in this legislation with defacement.
That's correct.
Okay.
Discussion?
Now we're good.
No further discussion. Ms. Cresser, will you pull the commission on the motion?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. That motion passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I'd like to add another amendment to that under Section B. What now starts as defacement means any authorized inscription, et cetera. Although, nothing changes, but I'd like to add at the end of that paragraph, after compliance officer has the right to be, add such inscription, word, figure, or design, word, figure, or mark of any type shall be deemed unauthorized if the property owner has not.
Is there a motion to amend to change, to add the word defacing?
Go for it.
Second to that?
I'll second it, it's easy.
Has there been a motion in a second? Mrs. Kresser, will you poll the commission on that motion?
Would she read the?
You have discussion on it?
Let her read, and I want to have her reread the motion, so I know what we're doing.
Mrs. Kresser, reread the motion.
I believe the motion was just to amend the legislation to add the word defacement rather than graffiti?
To replace, replace graffiti everywhere in this legislation with defacement.
That's correct.
Okay.
Discussion?
Now we're good.
No further discussion. Mrs. Kresser, will you poll the commission on the motion?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. That motion passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I'd like to add another amendment to that under Section B. What now starts as defacement means any authorized inscription, et cetera, although nothing changes, but I'd like to add at the end of that paragraph, after compliance officer has the right to be, add such inscription, word, figure, or design, word, figure, or mark of any type shall be deemed unauthorized if the property owner has not granted written permission prior to its application to the structure.
That form of a motion to amend?
That's a motion, that's my motion.
You have a motion to amend, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Mrs. Kresser?
I mean, I'm not, my concern is that it's the written portion that seems to be one that puts the, it really puts an undue onus on someone who might be making a mark at the direction of the, or change the direction of the owner, but doesn't have the permission in writing. I'm concerned about that.
Mr. Chairman, are you finished?
I'm interested.
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Murray, you know, permission can be given orally or in writing, and if today I go out and I give permission to somebody to do something, I've given them that permission already, and having them to go back and put it in writing is, it could be burdensome, or other things. So I think the wording there just needs to be taken out, but the amendment should stand otherwise.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
If somebody's going to draw something on your house to not, why would you not just write it down, write it? What happens is, if you don't do this, is that, for example, you find somebody doing some artwork on the side of a building. If they have the written permission, they can simply, whoever's doing it can show it to the police, and you don't have a problem. Also, you don't get into arguments later on whether I have permission or not. It's really, I mean, it's okay if you take, change it to written or oral, just recognize it's, we're not asking, it's not a burden, and it's a big, it'll be a pain trying to enforce it, dealing with oral, because now you get into, I didn't give them permission to do it just like that. It's just, it's just complicated, but it's fine if you want. Somebody makes a motion to take written out and make it something else, that's fine. I just don't think we're doing ourselves a favor, because it's not that big of a, not that difficult.
Move to.
For an owner to do that, for an owner to state what they, what they intend to be done, and then we don't have to argue about it later.
Pardon me, I did not mean, I did not mean to interrupt. I move to amend the amendment to delete the word written.
Is there a second to the amendment to the amendment? That amendment fails for lack of a second?
Sure does.
We're back to, we're back to, am I expected, is Mrs. Kresser expected to reread the amendment that Mr. Poole had the luxury of reading off of his iPad? Perhaps you could share that iPad with Mrs. Kresser, she could read it back to us.
You know, for the extra 10 bucks a week you get from sitting at the Center City.
This spent a lot of fun, really.
Chairman slash Vice Chairman, the motion was to amend the Section B at the end of the, end of the paragraph to add wording that says, such inscription, word, figure, or design, word, figure, or mark of any type shall be deemed unauthorized if the property owner has not granted written permission prior to its application to the structure.
No further discussion on something as simple as this?
You see, he's trying to drag this out, because I told him I'd share whatever portion of the, of the meeting he had to chair, so I had to portion the $10 with him, so he's going to bring this out.
I'm earning this 10 bucks, I can tell you that. Mrs. Kresser, would you poll the commission on the amendment?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
No.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Ms. Twine?
No.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That, motion for that amendment fails.
Why don't you just second what he said?
I don't know what you guys.
We have, we have this legislation on the table, we have a motion, we have a second, we have any further discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
To my colleagues to the right, there seems to be a slight discrepancy of a word in legislation, which happens from time to time with legislators. Perhaps there's a compromise between the two legislators as far as the wording goes.
I'm listening.
I don't know what that is, I mean, they have to give you.
If I may make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
I, this legislation is new to me, and I would appreciate a little bit more context in terms of what other communities do with respect to graffiti, and how they, you know, how they govern the interaction between law enforcement, the property owner, and the person who was alleged to have done something wrong with respect to the property, and I just feel as though we don't, I just feel as though I would like a little bit more background, and if we are required to put this on the next agenda, then fine, if it's passes on first reading, my preference frankly, right now, would be to either table it, or to, if, actually, my preference over tabling it would be to just defer it for a month, so we consider it not at the next meeting, but at the following meeting, after we have, we give your office an opportunity to provide a little bit more research. Is that possible?
Through you, Commissioner President, yes.
Okay.
So is that a motion to defer, is it a motion to table?
It is, it is a, it is not a motion to table, it is, I'm asking the law director if, if we can, if I can, as the, as the president of the commission controlling the agenda, just defer that for two weeks, so that we take that in two weeks subsequent, not the next meeting, but following that, so that we can do a little more research on it.
Excellent. I'm in favor of that.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Since he asked about other, other places, the wording of what I proposed is what I took directly from, I believe, Cleveland City Ordinance on this. Just give you a direction of where I got it from, I didn't make it up.
We'll, we'll look forward to Mr. Haber getting back to us, not at the next meeting, but two meetings out.
Will do.
Thank you. That concludes our short, but very important.
We got a, we got a, we got a motion in front of us, we have to do something with.
I thought you were deferring.
That would be the second reading.
That was the amendment, wasn't it? Sorry. Mrs. Kresser, will you poll the commission?
On the ordinance, first reading, Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That, that passes on first read.
Mr. Chairman, just before we go on, would you read what we just voted on? What was the, what actually did we?
I thought that was.
Is the ordinance now? Because we, it sounds like we did not get in the author, who authorizes it, which is what we're supposed to be doing.
So I.
Do we take out the written portion, or do we delete the whole thing?
If I may, Mr. Poole?
Sure.
So I believe that we took out just the written portion.
Okay.
And then I was having a sort of a side conversation with Mr. Haber about, you're shaking your head no.
No, I believe the amendment for the whole, second thing failed.
The written, the written part failed, the amendment that you had offered.
The whole authorization section failed.
Right, yeah.
It threw it all out, so we don't have, we don't have anything about authorization, which is what he asked for to start with, correct?
Correct.
How about if I make another?
I'll bring it back something.
I'll make another, now take the written out and leave it alone. I mean, like I said, it doesn't create any problem for me, I don't have to enforce this.
All right, that's fine.
No, that's right, we can't, because we turned it down.
I think that's too late, that's.
It's down, you're right, we have to.
Hold that thought.
No, I'm easy.
Hold on.
So where do we go from here?
Go home, I think.
We'll bring it back next, two weeks, in a month.
Trevor has a chance to.
Mr. Haber?
I mean, this is just first read, this is the reason why we do two reads on this type of stuff, so this is the whole reason of having two reads, so for this type of discussion.
Got it, okay. Does that finally conclude this agenda? Excellent. Mr. Wilmsor, I'm so glad to get to you.
That's a first. Thank you, Commission, Acting President, Commissioners, audience and staff. I'll start with the donations. First an $800 donation was received for the K-9 program from the Remember Cruising Car Club sponsor Smith Top Notch, and ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So move.
Second. I'll do it. There's been a motion, second, is there any further discussion? If not, hearing no objection, motion be approved, and hearing no, I'm sorry.
You've lost your place.
I've lost my place. If there's no objection, motion be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved, with our thanks to the car club.
Thank you. Also, a donation of $1,000 from the Sandusky Community Celebration Council for the purchase of holiday lights for Washington Park. I ask for a motion for that donation.
So move.
So move.
Second.
There's been a motion, second, discussion. No objection, motion be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Thank you. And then our final donation for the evening is of $800, received from David Impala Rangel Fund, from the Erie County Community Foundation, for the purchase of two benches for the Sandusky Transit System. I ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So move.
Second.
There's been a motion, second, discussion. No objection, motion be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved, with our thanks for the generous donation.
Absolutely. Moving on to Public Works, Barnes Nursery will kick off the strategic tree planting project this week, starting near Amvets and Colorado Cemetery. Also, the 2019 Leaf Collection Program is off to a great start and currently on schedule. Any changes due to inclement weather will be shared by a press release in the city's website, and congratulations to David Schaefer, who was promoted from a lab technician to the lab compliance officer at Big Island Waterworks. Moving on to the Planning Department, the regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 26th, at 5:00 PM, will take place in the commission chambers. Also, the regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, scheduled for Thursday, November 21st, at 4:30 PM, will also take place in the commission chambers, and the regularly Mark Commission meeting, scheduled for Wednesday, November 20th, at 4:30 PM, will also take place in the commission chambers. The regular Arts and Culture Commission meeting, scheduled for Tuesday, November 19th, at 5:00 PM, will also take place in the commission chambers. And then finally, a reminder and an announcement that an artist reception for Jordan Arnell Evans, the artist of the Transit Shelter murals, who is a Sandusky native and Sandusky High graduate, will be held November 16th, from noon to 2:00 PM, at Carrington Art Gallery. This will be an opportunity for the community to learn more about Jordan and his work, and as a celebration of the recent project, which we've gotten a lot of rave reviews for. And Carrington Art Gallery is at the corner of Jackson Street and West Water Street in downtown Sandusky. Moving on to Recreation, the Rec Department will be releasing the 2019-20 Winter Fund Guide soon. This year, the guide will include returning camps, like the Cookies for Santa, Baseball Winter Break Camp, Cheer, Greenhouse Yoga, and Bowling. The guide will also, the guide will also include new camps, like softball pitching. Additionally, Midtown Supper Club will returning for a second season, and a new lineup of movies will be shown at the Sandusky Greenhouse in 2020, including Aladdin and The Lion King. The 2019-20 Winter Fund Guide will be sent home to all students in Sandusky City Schools, as well as Sandusky Central Catholic Schools. Residents can find more information at the Rec Department's Facebook and Twitter pages, or contact the department at 419-627-5886. Also, the 2019-2020 Winter Break Camp will be held Mondays and Tuesdays, December 23rd and 24th, and 30th and 31st. The annual camp will be held at Sandusky High and host over 100 students. The camp will include, will conclude with a noon Year's Eve reception, featuring a DJ and entertainment from Prodigal Son of Hollywood Records, Holywood Records that is. And finally, the Ohio Parks and Rec Association has named one of the Sandusky Rec Department's programs as Best of 2019. The Midtown Supper Club won the Recreation Program category in the 2019 Oprah Awards of Excellence. The Midtown Supper Club won the award, a first for the Recreation Department in the inaugural season of the program. The 2019 program introduces youth to the culinary arts, utilizes local chefs, culminating to a four-course dinner with entertainment. The Sandusky Rec Department will be recognized during a banquet at the 2020 Oprah Conference and Trade Show, February at the Kalahari Resort and Convention Center, and I just want to commend the Rec Department for that. You know, Jason Whirling and Etzel A., and then particularly for that specific program, Tonda Frisbee, it was really her vision, and she worked hard with a lot of partners last year, including Halo Live and others, to make that possible, and it's great to see the state, the association, recognize them as a leader in the field. That concludes my remarks for this evening, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmsor. Commissioners, questions or comments for the city manager? If not, then before we turn to old business, I do want to apologize for being late, I was subject to the jurisdiction of federal court, they just sometimes let you go, and that's how that was, so I try to make sure those things don't overlap, but I couldn't help it today. Old business? Is there any items of old business?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm not, yeah, this is old, and I hate to do this, but before we, before Mr. Haber comes back at the second reading on the graffiti ordinance, I'd like to give him a little more direction with regard to understanding your concerns with written permission, and, and I would, just where you're at, because I'm kind of lost, and this is why. If we don't protect the homeowner, when someone defaces their property, the defense is, I had oral, oral permission, and then it's he said, she said. Now, I'm not sure, I'm giving you an opportunity to explain why written permission bothers you so much, but I see it as, as the homeowner has protections. If the homeowner by chance gave oral permission, then it'll never be an issue. They'll step up and say, yeah, I said they could do that, and it's not, not important at all whether it is written or not, because the owner steps up and says it's okay. So I think, as Mr. Haber goes further, give some thought to that, and I think it's irresponsible for us to leave homeowners in that position, where they have, you can't prove that I didn't give you oral permission to deface my property. So that's just my thoughts on it, and please tell me, help me understand why written permission is such a problem for you.
Are you asking me?
Yes, yes, sir. If you, if you wish to add to it, but that's what I, what I send Trevor to write this with, it's, it's more important that we protect the property owners than it is, I'm not, I'm not sure where you're at on this, is what the problem is for me.
Well, I, I'd like to get a little bit more feedback, I'd like to hear from the chief police, I'd like to hear from maybe our municipal prosecutor. It, it just strikes me as an oddity, and it's a one-off in terms of my understanding of most municipal misdemeanor laws, I guess this could be a felony in some circumstances, but to, to put the onus on the defendant to have written permission just seems to go too far, and I'm just concerned that that's, that's putting people in a position where the homeowner says, someone did work on my property, or did something on my property, I didn't give them permission, they didn't have written permission, and now the person is charged, you know, I, I'll grant you, I can't think of too many circumstances where that'd be a problem. Most, most of the time, would be pretty darned obvious, but I, I'm just concerned, I'd like a little bit more feedback on it. That's as much as I can articulate right now.
Okay, well, let me add, I may.
Sure.
Add this for your, for your thoughts with regard to anybody from outside my family that does just about anything to my house, whether it's a plumber, electrician, painter, or whatever, we ultimately have a written, generally a written contract in which he sends me a bill for what they did and so forth. So just give consider, I'm not, just give some second thought to, to your concerns, I'm having trouble understanding why, in this case, it would not be the same, it's no greater burden in my mind, but again, see what Mr. Haber comes back with. Thank you.
I promise I will reflect on it, thank you. Other items of old business? Any items of new business? Seeing none, hearing none, is, we turn to audience participation, anyone wishing to address the commission, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us any thoughts that you might have this evening.
Greetings, everyone, Tom LaMarcus, we've got a short crowd, so I get about 30 minutes this evening, right? I'll try and be short, though. At the September 13th, 2000 meeting, a change order under the suspension of rules for an additional cost related to 707 Warren Street was approved for the, any amount of $7,244 to remove approximately 15,000 square feet of concrete, three to four-inch slab across that entire area. In doing a little research, that really equates to the whole site, and I, I know that property was not all concrete. In fact, when you go out and look at the work that was done, you can see that the concrete really was the drive aprons, entrance aprons, and the location of the office, because when Dick had to remove the fuel storage tanks around that site, with his insurance office and through the, through the state, he cracked all that concrete up, or. office and through the, through the state, he cracked all that concrete up, or the majority of it up, and replaced it with asphalt. So I think that we kind of got a bad run there, but I'm concerned that, one, the contractor didn't finish the job as the contract read. The contract read that he would go in and clean up all that debris that was there, and then backfill it with topsoil that's capable of growing vegetation, namely grass. And in fact, I think it reads that he was supposed to seed the site as well. And then my other concern with that project, or the incompletion of the project, and I know that Mr. Klein and his crew, they're plates full, but it appears to me that the contractor abandoned the site in thinking that he's done, because he was to be done by 10/20, October 20th of the whole project, and he was done well before that, because he knocked it out in like two days. But the aprons where he did take out a little bit of concrete there, is, is an immediate drop-off of about five to six inches from the road surface. So like in last night's snowstorm, someone in a vehicle could have slid trying to stop at that stoplight, and went off of that drop-off and caused significant damage to their automobile, or perhaps injury. And so then whose responsibility would that have been for those injuries or damages caused because of that drop-off? It's an unsafe condition. He put two radio cones in the center of the two aprons, but that's insufficient, insufficient in my book, and certainly if it was a city project, we wouldn't leave it that way, you wouldn't leave it that way. So I, I would like to suggest that you declare an emergency and a suspension of the rules, and stop payment on the track for the site until it's made safe. That's that issue. Next one is Battery Park, I noticed that there was a survey crew out there doing a lot of survey work over the past weekend or so, and I'm wondering if, if the commission has plans for the, developing that site where, I mean, we all know that certain parts of Battery Park, you are prohibited from taking away public access and developing, but we also know that there's maybe three or four acres in that mess that you could kind of sell off, lease off, do as you please, and throw some condos and such. If that is your plan, I would, I would appreciate it if you would put that up on a ballot, and let the citizens of Sandusky vote on any project that you plan on throwing into that corridor and blocking off potential access. On the, because on the graffiti issue, I might as well touch on that, if I am to go out and hunt on a, any farm out there, I need by, by law, I believe, to have written, one minute. I have to have written permission from the farmer, the property owner, to hunt that farm. So I can't call him and talk to his wife, and she gives me verbal permission to go out and hunt. So perhaps, you know, keep that in mind. And then on the other side of that verbal permission, if we have a domestic situation where there's a divorce coming about, and the wife gives permission to go and paint all over that property because the husband's going to take control of the house, or vice versa, you know, who's to say that that might not happen? So that's all we've got.
Thank you, Mr. Poole.
Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry. The, the city crew did a fantastic job, again, on the decorations, city lights, and all that good stuff, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, if you could, before the next meeting, or perhaps before the end of the week, just give the commission an email with an update on where we are with the, with that Warren and Monroe Street property, just to give us a follow, that's Mr. Lasco, oh. If you could give us an update by the end of the week, I certainly appreciate that. And I am, I don't know why a survey crew would have been out there, there's no plan that I'm aware of, perhaps someone was taking a look at it, it could have been utilities, I don't know, but there's certainly nothing under wraps over here. All right, there's no, no one else wishing to address the commission? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Stand adjourned.